Here.
Donkey.
I'm here.
Plesky.
Here.
Trusty Sarno.
Here.
Trusty Trejo.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for the presentations of tonight's agenda.
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
We'll move right into the, uh, public comments because we are doing this, uh, as a virtual meeting. Um, we will have the, uh, public comments read this evening and they're turned in. And Madam Clerk, if you can do the presentation of those, and then they'll be addressed by the appropriate department head.
Okay. Our first one is from Roberta Barino, and she's, she states, "We've learned a, um, a lot of things differently in the last several months. One really good thing that has come out of all of this is, um, out of all of this uncertainty is the recording of village board meetings, and their subsequent availability for viewing at the community's convenience. I have watched two meetings so far and find them both interesting and informative. I appreciate the ability to watch these board meetings on a day and time that are, better fits my schedule, and encourage the village board to continue utilizing this technology going forward." Second, um, public con, comment is from Elaine Perconi. She's a business owner. She says, "We have had our business in Roselle since 2010 and have enjoyed serving this community. Our small practice has been closed since March 21st due to the state shutdown. We plan to reopen in June sometime, but have considerable costs to face to follow the CDC guidelines. We are requesting an extension of our business license renewal to June 30th or later to help us survive. Thank you for considering our request." The next one is from, um, before I read it verbatim, just going to comment that it is somewhat, difficult to read and cut up, so I'm gonna just, I'm reading it verbatim. So if it doesn't make sense, just understand I'm reading it verbatim. Roof permits inspection is done while the job is in process. Proof needs to be in the window. Because of so relaxing on fence permits caused backlash and bad feelings with the village and neighbor. I have been wait for seven months for village inspector to call me back and follow up on my neighbor's fence. Also took the dirt from the poles and they changed the flow from the northwest corner. Three feet above ground, not in this import. Fence pulls six inches inside, two inches. A born line tree should have been removed or trimmed up, and for the backside, he for sure on the neighbor property and least eight inches a foot. I would like to ask if you could before permit issue that they should watch a YouTube on their project to make sure they understand basic. Thank you. A picture will be following. No picture followed. The next comment is from Cindy Cuda, Roselle resident, who asks, "Why is there a limit to senior discounts?" And another public comment from Cindy Cuda asking, "What is the village ordinance on lawn care?" And that is it.
Thank you. Like I said, we'll have the appropriate department heads, um, answer those questions. Okay, moving on to official and staff reports. I am first, and I would like to ask for a motion to appoint Mark Bosick as our fire chief with the consent of the village board.
Oh, second.
Okay, and can I have, uh, Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Yes. Trusty Trejo.
Aye.
Trusty Donkey.
Aye.
Trusty Sarno.
Aye.
Trusty Brookshire.
Yes.
Trusty Devon.
Aye.
Trusty Plesky.
Aye.
And I would also like to make it formally known that when we get back to a regular schedule or something, I would like to do this in public so he can have the presence of his family and everybody there to support him and show him how much we really think, how he's come around and what he has done in this pandemic. Okay, moving on to village trustees. Anybody have anything to report? Mr. Donkey?
I am another grandpa.
Congratulations.
That's.
My daughter and baby boy.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir. Anybody else?
Congratulations.
Have anything to share? Okay, moving right along. Village clerk?
I'll report. No report.
Okay. Village administrator?
No report. Oh, I'm sorry.
Village administrator?
Uh, just two things. Um, as you all know, with, um, the governor's, uh, actions last week regarding the Restore Illinois Plan and the impact, uh, guidelines that he released regarding the opening of restaurants and bars, um, for outside seating, staff has quickly mobilized, uh, in community development, fire and police, and working with our village attorney, Jim Knippen, to draft an executive order that could be reviewed by the board, um, and, and passed by Andy that would allow, uh, our restaurants and bars to open for outside seating. It's, uh, the order is, uh, May 29th. Just a couple of things there. The order will basically, um, suspend enforcement of zoning and liquor control ordinances that would prohibit the sale and delivery of alcohol for outdoor dining. As you all know, the majority of our bars are on private property. We have a few on Main Street. This would suspend those enforcement of those ordinance, for example, uh, for the zoning, which would be a special use, a planned unit development, a site plan, that would allow for a business owner to maybe use the parking lot, uh, for additional seating with the permission of the private property owner. We would also have a permit review process where we would have note cards for a permit, but this would allow for our community development, our fire and police chiefs to review, now the plan that the restaurant or bar owner wants to put forward, and then we would sign off on that. The governor's, uh, guidelines will have to be attached inside, uh, inside by the business owner. Bathrooms, per the guidelines, would, uh, customers would be able to use the business owner's bathroom inside, uh, so we don't have to worry about private property being on private property. And at the end of the day, we'd like to get, uh, the board to review it tomorrow and Andy to sign off on it, um, so that come Friday, anybody that wants to operate a bar or a restaurant and use outside seating to take advantage of the new guidelines could do that. So with that, uh, Jim, if you had any additional comments?
I think you've covered it well, Jeff. Uh, the only thing is, what you'll see in the order is, is that we've tried to incorporate as much flexibility into it from a staff standpoint. So we can make it work and make it viable from a, a business standpoint as well. And I think that the governor's, um, both his guidelines as well as his toolkits, uh, make that available to us now. But we didn't want to micromanage it into the order to the point where, um, it, it, it would become, um, very inflexible and problematic. So as you read the order, um, that's one of the things that we've attempted to accomplish.
Mr. Donkey, I see you waving your hand there.
Just, uh, maybe I, I didn't hear every word that Jeff, uh, kinda cut out a couple of times, and maybe it was, uh, not said even. When you say bar, are they gonna be able to sit next to each other at a place to drink over the bar? Or you're just talking about bar service?
Bar service, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it doesn't permit bar seating.
Right, right, okay. That, that was in your memo, so I wanted to make sure. And then the second thing is, you know, there's been a lot of talk about shutting down Main Street. Is that something we're gonna do? Cut off traffic on Main Street?
No.
And how would that work out for the other establishments?
Sure, uh, Wayne, uh, there's really only five businesses on Main Street that this would apply to. Starbucks, Juice and Berry, 1913, 8,000 Miles and Pollyanna. And right now, 1913 has intimated to, uh, Pat Watkins, our director of community development, that he may not be interested in using outside seating. So we're still waiting to hear back from. 8,000 Miles has the town center plaza that we just opened up a license agreement. So the only business we feel that may require something would be Juice and Berry, and that would be on the sidewalk. As you know, that public sidewalk extends far. So Wayne, to, to our, really the only businesses that may encroach on private property, uh, it would be 1913 that may want to use the street or a couple of parking places. But from our vantage point right now, we don't see that need.
Okay. Trusty Plesky?
So out of curiosity, if, for instance, I think of the, uh, shopping center off of Irving Park, um, if someone wanted to, and they got the permission of the owner to go into the parking lot, is there any review or anything that we do from like a public safety perspective to make sure that it's not obstructing, um, access to fire hydrants or other emergency things? God forbid something were to happen.
Yes, they will have to submit a plan that will be reviewed by our police and fire chiefs. We will have some sort of barriers that do not permit cars to encroach where people are seated. To your point, David, there will be a review process, but we are gonna do everything we can to help the business owner and the private property owner.
Thanks, Jeff. And then for that review?
I'm sorry.
Wayne.
I'm sorry.
For the review process, are you, how quickly do you feel we can turn? It takes some time. There might be back and forth between what's submitted and what our suggestions are. Do we feel like we can get that down at 24 or 48 hours of business hours?
Yes. We have, we have three staff members dedicated to making sure that we can get back to our businesses as quickly as possible.
Lee?
I just wanna ask a question regarding parking. Like, is there any thought to maybe relaxing the restrictions on metro and just opening that lot up so that consumers that wanna maybe go to Bulldog or Deaney's or any of these other restaurants, if they're using some of the parking lot to just have more of a space to park?
We haven't discussed that, Lee, but I know other communities have, um, have other areas where people can bring their food to, um, that may not be adjacent to the business is, is another opportunity to pick up at a restaurant. And those may be towns that have more, uh, restaurants in their downtown area.
Yeah, I just think using the metro lot either to let people park or eat there or something might be, like, no one's using that lot right now. The rider ship's down like 97%, so there's like five cars there a day. So there's a lot of empty space there.
Same could be said about the village hall parking lot, too. I don't think enough people realize that they can park there.
Hey, anybody else? Jeff, is that all you had?
Right, one more thing, Andy, if that's okay. As you know, we've had all of our municipal buildings closed since March 18th. Um, and with the stay-at-home order probably being lifted at the end of this month, uh, we as a staff have been working on, uh, kind of that reopening plan here. And I just wanna confirm for the board, and if I'm, if there's any, um, sort of trepidation of us waiting till July 1. Um, obviously, our police, fire and public works, um, have been working with different operations, but the village hall has been closed. Uh, other than myself and our finance director and a couple of other employees, all of our employees have been remote, remote working from home. We think we need till July 1st to kinda continue that facility and employee preparation, access to, access to our municipal buildings and so forth. We would like to, the first two weeks in June, Jason and our fire chief, Mark Bosick, are gonna be meeting with our community development department or, um, finance department to meet with their employees. So at the end of the day, we'd like to, to transition to that July 1st to where we do our planning the first couple of weeks in June. We actually bring certain people back into our building, um, the last two weeks of June that would enable us to kind of, um, reopen in some fashion, um, whether that's certain hours, whether that's every day beginning on July 1st. And I just wanted to make sure if that was okay with the board.
Anybody have any objections?
I mean, are we getting the job done right now? Is there a public, uh, clamor for us to reopen? Is anything being negatively impacted by being closed? I don't think there's any risk in leaving it till July 1st.
Yep, I think with the ability to, uh, submit things online, uh, with pushing the vehicle stickers out so that traffic, certainly there's people coming to the door and Tom's able to deal with them, but as a whole, for the, for employee safety and for our public safety, we'd like this additional time to kind of plan out that reopening.
Patrick?
Looking at the calendar here, I see that the 4th is Saturday, so I would assume we're gonna, um, observe that on Friday the 3rd. Would it be better to, and this is just my suggestion, is waiting until July 6?
Sure.
Just so that we're not open two days and then people come in and say, "Well, oh, it's closed for July 4th."
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees for that.
No problem at all. Thank you. Uh, village attorney?
I have no report, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, chamber of Congress liaison, Patrick?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Roselle Chamber of Commerce, just a reminder that tomorrow is the table of interest, uh, virtual from 11:30 to 1:00. The social media tricks and tips, and, uh, the partnership with our local chambers. Also a reminder is a partnership with Brunch Cafe tomorrow from 8:00 AM to 1:30 PM. Uh, any orders directly to Brunch Cafe will, uh, assist the chamber with 10% of your bill, uh, going back to the chamber. So, uh, recommend, uh, if you're, uh, looking for somewhere to eat tomorrow, uh, choose Brunch Cafe. When you order, just mention the, uh, Roselle Chamber, and, uh, that will help assist us. That is all on behalf of the chamber.
Thank you. Treasurers report?
Hey, good evening, everybody. Uh, it's been a long time. The, the meeting packet, uh, contains my normal treasurer's report. But due to the pandemic, my comments this evening will be more, uh, more timely, things that are happening now. Uh, I decided to keep the normal format, uh, of the report just for, for my sanity. But I wanted to update you as where we are now. But if you have any questions regarding the report in the packet, I'll be happy to answer them. And as we headed into the pandemic, uh, we were wrapping up the, the fiscal year 2019, uh, numbers and beginning the audit. In fact, the day that we were closed was the first day of the audit. And we are finalizing that document now, and I can tell you that we added a million 40,000, uh, to fund balance in the general fund at the end of 2019. So we headed into this year, uh, you know, you know, at a great starting point, and we continued into the year, uh, until we got to the pandemic, of course. And as that hit, you know, we put some, I put some numbers together, looked at it, uh, and as Jeff had mentioned in an earlier meeting, projecting the deficit of 1.8 million, uh, so far for the year, uh, based on what we received to date, and just projecting revenue and payroll through the end of the year. As numbers come in, I'm continuing to update the actual numbers, uh, or those, uh, those estimates, and, um, still staying at that, that 1.8, uh, for now, uh, which is good. We're holding steady. We're not, uh, we're not seeing anything go crazy just yet, but since this is an unprecedented occurrence, it's difficult to predict what could happen, uh, as we move along. Don't know the future. This is really hard to predict what's gonna happen. Uh, so for tonight, I'd just like to give you some highlights of some of the major revenues and activities, uh, just so you have a, an understanding of, of what we've been seeing. So in May, we received sales tax, uh, that was for February sales, uh, and that was down 12%. But as I dug into that a little bit, I see that, uh, one of our bigger ones just happened to be down, uh, for the month, about 20,000, and one of our other big sales tax producers had actually a negative, uh, $2,800. So instead of being 13,000, they were down, there was a negative, so they had something happen in their, in their paperwork. So, you know, taken together, I don't think we would have been down. It, it, it's just a weird time. And then there are several, uh, that took advantage of the mayor, uh, the governor's, uh, uh, hold, uh, or the ability to wait on paying their sales tax for, for that month. Uh, so we had, had that to deal with. But again, you know, we'll see in a couple of weeks what that number's gonna be for March sales. Uh, and so there's this lag that, that is really, uh, hard to put, um, put numbers together. Income tax was down 50% uh, this month, but then again, the governor pushed off, um, income tax returns till, I believe, July 31st. So we're gonna see a lag on that number as well. MFT, uh, was down 20%. So motor fuel tax, uh, that is starting to, to, that was the first month of, of seeing, the gasoline, you know, people weren't going to work, people weren't driving as much, uh, so MFT was down 20% from the year before. And eating establishment tax, which I think everybody's been trying to, to take a look at and see what's been, been going on. For February, uh, we started, uh, we're almost, uh, done getting the, the, uh, all the returns for February. Uh, believe it or not, some are, are still, um, slow in pain. Um, February was up 6%. And so far for March, it's down 30%. So in kind of thinking that's where my projections were coming from, I projected a 30% drop, uh, for that month and 50% uh, for the other months. Uh, and then April so far, we've received, um, uh, 12,000 in, in, uh, eating tax, so that's down just under 70%. Then again, out of the 51 that reported sales to us for the previous, for the month of March, only 37 have reported so far, uh, for April. So there's this lag again. But we did get a bunch today, and there were some of our bigger ones, so I was encouraged to see that we're gonna get closer to that 50%. Video gaming, uh, as everybody knows, video gaming shut down in the middle of March. So we were down 42% for that month, and now we won't get any. I was just trying to look to see when, uh, video gaming would be open, what phase that would be open. I, I'm not sure. I did not, uh, perhaps Jim can, can, uh, mention that. So, uh, that is a complete loss for these months. I don't know when that's gonna return. Uh, I would think phase four, uh, when restaurants can open more. So that could be another month or two before we see, uh, video gaming tax return. And then, uh, for water, uh, usage, um, it was interesting. So if you look in your packet into the, the, um, the treasurer's report for April, uh, water revenue, water usage was down, uh, in the month of March. In April, it was al, it was almost exactly flat from the prior year. Uh, but the interesting thing is that commercial was down, uh, 2 million gallons. Government usage was down 750,000 gallons, uh, so that would be schools, uh, you would see, of course, because they're not, nobody's there. Residential was up 2,800,000, so it balanced out. So with everybody home, uh, residents are using more water. Of course, on the commercial side and the government side, nobody's using water, or it, it's down. So it was almost completely flat. So as far as that goes, uh, water consumption, the water fund, uh, no change, uh, from the prior year. I just thought that was interesting. And then the, uh, two last things, um, building permits. In April, uh, permits were down 36%. So far through May, um, we've had 134 building permit requests, uh, which compares to last year, there was 149. Uh, so building permits have picked up. And it's interesting, uh, when I see them come in, they're for, uh, roofs and driveways like you would expect in the spring, uh, and some pumps, where you're, we're also seeing patios and sheds and, and some of the bigger items as well. So it's encouraging, uh, I think from that standpoint, that you're still seeing people commit thousands of dollars to, uh, projects on their property. And, you know, hopefully that bodes well for the, for the rest of the summer in terms of people spending money. And then the, the last thing is the other big item, property taxes. Normally by this time in the month of May, uh, we get about 135,000, uh, in property tax, and we've gotten 60. Uh, so we're down about 55% from where we expect. That would be, and that mostly is, we, we receive that from DuPage County. We still have another week to go. We may get some more money in, uh, but that would go towards, uh, what the, the, the county has done and letting people pay later in the year. So we may see that, uh, people take advantage of that, and we'll see more property tax come in September. Not that we won't get it, it's just, uh, we won't get it in the time that we're, we're used to. So it's just another cash flow. But the village is doing well on cash flow. Uh, we're not needing to borrow anything at this point. Uh, we have plenty in reserve, uh, for now, uh, so that we can withstand for the foreseeable future. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. All items under consent agenda are considered to be routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory and non-controversial in nature, and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no discussion on these items. If I can have our attorney give us a summary of the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And tonight's consent agenda, we have presentation and approval of the May 11th, 2020 meeting minutes and the adoption of an ordinance approving the sale of surplus property of the village. That's all.
Need a motion to accept the consent agenda?
The move.
I'll need a second, please.
I'll second.
And since we have an audit, uh, an ordinance under, may I have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Trusty Devon.
Aye.
Trusty Donkey.
Aye.
Trusty Brookshire.
Yes.
Trusty Sarno.
Aye.
Trusty Plesky.
Aye.
Trusty Trejo.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Down to our regular agenda on the community development. Trusty Plesky?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing additional work under the contract between the village of Roselle and SB Friedman for professional services associated with an agreement for, uh, at Jerris Project in the East Irving Park Road Tiff District.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just add that it's for essentially $15,000 extra in additional work that was completed, um, per our previous agreement.
Madam Clerk, you lead?
I just had a quick comment on that. I think, you know, I, I did see in the letter that they took off maybe like a little over a thousand dollars, basically due to the misscoping of the project. Um, I do think that we should get more than the 1,100 or so dollars that they've wiped away so far, just, just from the severe sort of miscalculation on their end. That's just my comment.
Anybody else? Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
Trusty Plesky.
Aye.
Trusty Devon.
Aye.
Trusty Brookshire.
Yes.
Trusty Sarno.
Aye.
Trusty Donkey.
Aye.
Trusty Trejo.
Nay.
And our motion is carried. Is there anything else?
That's it tonight.
Okay, under administration, Trump, Sarno, we have nothing for you this evening. Welcome, and thanks for joining, uh, in your first meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, under fire, trustee Devon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the fire department, I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing a side letter to the collective bargaining agreement between the village of Roselle and the Roselle Professional Firefighters Association, which is the local 4051 IAFF, representing the full-time firefighters.
Again.
Hey, any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Yep. Trusty Devon.
Aye.
Trusty Trejo.
Aye.
Trusty Brookshire.
Yes.
Trusty Sarno.
Aye.
Trusty Donkey.
Aye.
Trusty Plesky.
Aye.
And our motion is carried. Is there anything else this evening?
That, that is all on behalf of fire, Mr. Mayor.
Under police, Mr. Donkey, we have nothing for you. Mr. Brookshire, under public works, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the approval of a payment to JWC Environmental for the purchase of the replacement parts for the Devlin wastewater treatment plant screening washer in the amount of $9,376.69.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Berkshire?
Yes.
Trustee Devin?
Aye.
Trustee Trejo?
Aye.
Trustee Poleski?
Aye.
Trustee Sarno?
Aye.
Trustee Domke?
Aye.
And our motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the approval of the payment to Dreisler Electric Motors, Inc., for the purchase of a replacement motor for the Devlin wastewater treatment plant screening washer in the amount of $882.75.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Berkshire?
Yes.
Trustee Devin?
Yes.
Trustee Poleski?
Aye.
Trustee Sarno?
Aye.
Trustee Domke?
Aye.
Trustee Trejo?
Aye.
And our motion is carried.
Okay, so then I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the village administrator to sign a letter of intent to award Kino &amp; Sons Contract Construction Company a contract for the Bollman Oxidation Ditch Aerator Replacement Project.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to add a, I think that Karen and her team did a great job finding a way to which to pay for this, and especially using the loan that we have. Because even though we have some of the money, she's putting that in the bank and using someone else's money so that we can have that in reserve.
Okay. Hey, Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Berkshire?
Yes.
Trustee Devin?
Aye.
Trustee Sarno?
Aye.
Trustee Domke?
Aye.
Trustee Trejo?
Aye.
Trustee Poleski?
Aye.
And our motion is carried. Anything else this evening for Public Works?
That is it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Moving on to Finance, Trustee Trejo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to pass an ordinance amending the Village of Roselle code of ordinances for the purposes of changing the license year for vehicle licenses.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we just outline what that is for people that are viewing this?
Tom, do you want to take care of that?
Sure. So what this is doing is the, the current stickers that are on people's vehicles will expire on September 30th of 2020. And going forward, the new sticker year will be October 1st through October 30th each year.
October.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, October 1st to September 30th each year. And the, so the, in July, the renewal forms will go out for the, the new stickers. And those, those forms will be due September 30th. The stickers then, that we have, we had purchased them, obviously, probably in December or January for the new year. They say 5/30/21. But those, again, those will expire September 30th of 21 for the, for the new year.
That gives a little relief to our residents to, they're awesome. So that was very well thought of and done.
I'd like to make one statement about that.
You're welcome.
I'm totally in agreement with doing this. It's a great deal. I think what we need to do, though, is make people aware that it's really about a $233,000 gift from the village. We need those funds. You know, everybody'd like to get rid of the vehicle stickers. But quite frankly, where would you get $700,000 if you didn't have vehicle stickers? And so by delaying it four months, you're basically saying that we're gonna, we're gonna, we're going to give back $233,000 of fees. Because basically, I would have a vehicle sticker for 16 months instead of 12, which is, is a benefit. So we should at least let people know that we're giving back some of the money to try to help them through this pandemic.
That was the relief I was speaking about. Yes, Wayne, thank you.
But it has a number. It has, it has a number. It's not just a nice thing. We're really doing a yeoman's job to try to help residents. It's roughly about $10 a person to try to help get through this pandemic.
Very valid point. Thank you, Mr. Domke. Okay, anything else?
David has something.
Yeah, I think just to put Wayne's comment in the context, Tom, can you provide? Because I think, Wayne, if I'm correct, you're just quoting the amount of money that would have reflected the four-month extension, not the entire revenue we received. Tom, do you mind just for the context of that, what we receive annually in vehicle sticker revenue?
Sure, we budget about $680,000 in, in revenue from vehicle stickers. So Wayne is speaking to that, those, yes, those four months are a quarter of that or so that the sticker year for 2020 is actually 16 months. So you get an additional benefit. But then also now going forward, it's a year. And with what the mayor was speaking of to the, the sticker year, instead of them getting eight months for this next one, it's, it's a full year.
Right, right.
Yes, you're, you're.
The benefit is right now. It's basically right now.
Exactly.
Did we need a roll call on that one?
It's an ordinance.
Yes.
Trustee Trejo?
Aye.
Trustee Devin?
Aye.
Trustee Sarno?
Aye.
Trustee Domke?
Definitely aye.
Trustee Poleski?
Aye.
And Trustee Berkshire?
Yes.
And our motion is carried. Okay, moving on to other business. Mr. Devin?
Hey, I just had a question concerning the, one of the comments. Do we know, and if we don't offhand, it maybe just be updated, on how many views the last meeting has racked up?
Ace, can you answer that? Do we have to get that?
I don't know. I, it could be in front of me somewhere, but I'll, if okay, we'll provide that.
Whenever, I'm just curious how many people are actually logging in and viewing it. That'd be great. Thanks, Jason.
Will do.
And anybody else? Okay, moving on, I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, the purpose of the executive session, sorry about that, is to discuss collective bargaining with the Metropolitan Alliance of Police Roselle Chamber 258. No final action is anticipated.
Do we, do we come back to this meeting after executive session, or?
No. No, you're just gonna, we'll adjourn directly from here. The executive session will not be recorded.
So can I just say something while we're just on this? I want to welcome Barb to the board. It's nice to have six on the board. And, you know, you're a welcome member of our team now.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, welcome, Barb.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I've had Adam helping me with everything. He's wonderful.
Well, you guys are doing a good job.
Okay. Can I have a roll call to go into executive session?
Trustee Trejo?
Aye.
Trustee Devin?
Aye.
Trustee Berkshire?
Yes.
Trustee Sarno?
Aye.
Trustee Poleski?
Aye.
Trustee Domke?
Aye.
And off we are to executive session.
Hope to see you again, yes.
We had it adjourned.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you later.
Night, everybody.